I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there are no special presentations tonight, so we'll go on to approve of minutes. May I have approval to request minutes for June 10th, July 23rd, August 15th, and August 26th? Approved minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we can go on to citizens' comments. No citizen comments. Council liaison, Mrs. Paglisi.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I would like to congratulate Superintendent LaPage. I believe this is your first official board meeting.
That's correct.
So, congratulations. I'm sure you'll do an outstanding job. I do want to thank you for inviting me and the council to the convocation last week. It was a wonderful presentation, and we certainly do appreciate being included in those kinds of activities. So, thanks again. I also would like to welcome our new assistant superintendent. We spoke a few minutes out in the hallway. I'm afraid I can't pronounce your name. Could you tell me how to say that?
Levenduski.
Okay. I'll remember that.
Thank you.
Anyway, and also, before I go on with my report, I just wanted to say that I have to leave right after I deliver my comments. I have another few things I have to take care of this evening, so with your permission, I will take my leave after I finish with this. So, thanks for your understanding. The council only met two times during the summer. We don't totally go on hiatus, but we did meet one time in July and one time in August. So, I'll just give you a little bit of an update as to what happened. This first note may be a little bit redundant, but I think it bears repeating. Back in June, our police chief, Matt Katania, was named Chief of the Year by the police chiefs, by the police organization in Connecticut. There was a proposal sent out to all our cities and towns asking for nominations for police chiefs, and of course, Plainville did an outstanding job in responding to that. The folks that participated in the written submissions were myself, Dr. Maureen Brummet, Trish Tomlinson, who is our librarian for the town, Sean Cohen, and Rhonda, who are from the senior center, and Mark Fasano, who also contributed along with Robert Lee. Each of us just wrote a little bit of information about Chief Katania and how we've interacted with him over the past year since he's become our chief. They were submitted to a panel who reviewed everything, and we went to a dinner, and no surprise to us, however, I think Chief Katania was thrilled because he is the first to receive this honor, and he's still getting high fives about that stuff. If you ever see him, just congratulate him again. You can never say congratulations enough when you get these kinds of recognition from your peers, so we're really thrilled about that. Couple more things. In July, we spoke about our road paving update. The council did vote to put forward another bonding request to the citizens for $5 million for Phase Two of our road improvements. There will be a question on the November election ballot for the voters to consider. So, it is, our past paving project has gone very well. We paved several streets in town, and we think this is a good investment in our community. Certainly, we're not going to get to all of them even with this next $5 million if it passes, but it will make a significant improvement in our roads. And as we all know, New England roads can really be challenging due to a lot of weather conditions that they have to endure. So, that will be on the November ballot for, hopefully, our voters will approve that. In addition to that, and this is a little bit of in conjunction with the Wheeler School Project, we had a resident that lived on the north side of Birch Tree Road who contacted the town regarding access to Pateroski Pond behind Wheeler School. In the past, residents living in the Birch Tree, Dogwood, and Plum Tree Road area could access Pateroski Pond through a gate located on the Wheeler Elementary School property. There's about 40 homes over there that would probably be participating in some of that. And due to the recent renovations and the need to restrict access on school property during the year, a new fence was constructed that now prohibits access to the pond area. The town went forward and consulted with Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and their recommendation is to create a path on town-owned property adjacent to the east side of the new fence. The work was performed by the Buildings and Grounds Department on our staff, and the path would allow the residents of this area to access Pateroski Park as they have done in the past. And the path is approximately 175 feet from the nearest home located on Birch Tree Road. So, it was a kind of a response to a local question we had which arose because of some of the work that's being done at the Wheeler School area, and we thought that would be a good compromise so that those folks can continue to access the pond as they had done in the past. In our August meeting, we had an update from Valley Water Systems by their president, Donald Vaughn. Ty and Bond in 2018 issued a study entitled "Valley Water Hardness Removal Evaluation." There were a number of issues that came about in regard to the hardness of our water. We've had several public meetings regarding that. It has been determined, because our water is groundwater, it doesn't come from a reservoir, it comes from under the ground, there's a high degree of mineral content in this which makes our water not very hard, but it's very, very, very hard. And some of this you will see the result of in some of your appliances and things of that nature. The water is perfectly safe to drink and use for anything that you'd like, however, it does create some issues with some of those things. As a response to that, Valley Water had investigated a treatment system which is potential to reduce the hardness down to almost 50%, more than 50% of what it is right now. So, to get some of that hardness out of the water, it certainly will make an interesting change in the perception and how the water is being used in the homes and towns. It's not going to be, the treatment system is a one system which is a, it's a very chemically changing process that is far more technical than I can explain to you, but it would involve building a device that can run the water through it, and it would eliminate the hardness. This will be put near the Woodford Avenue well, and in addition to that, they will mix the water from our other well on Johnson Avenue, which is less hard. So, as a result, we're hoping there'll be a significant drop in the hardness for most of the folks in Plainville. So, it is an attempt to answer some of the complaints that people have been having. This is not a new issue with Plainville Water. It has been like this since Plainville Water existed over 100 years ago. But this is now a more proactive attempt by Valley Water to try and address some of these concerns with their customers. So, I'm sure you'll be reading more as the process goes through. The water company is a privately owned water company, but it's controlled by PURA, which is a state regulatory agency. It is also controlled by the DPUC, which oversees the, you know, the health and safety issues of the water. So, they do have to respond in great detail to those regulatory agencies, and they will be coordinating with them in terms of getting this new facility built and in terms of going forward, trying to soften the water. So, it's an interesting process, and we give them credit for responding to their customers' concerns because it has been going on a long time. A couple more smaller items we talked about. At our firehouse, we have a tower on which we rent space to cellphone providers, one of which is T-Mobile. T-Mobile has recently asked to install a generator adjacent to their cell tower. The T-Mobile is proposing to increase the rent payment to the town by approximately $200 per month. The generator would operate in lieu of a battery backup system they currently have in place. The firehouse also has a separate generator to run a portion of their building during power outages, so this generator would not be in conjunction with the firehouse generator. It would be for their own power. We are going to be working with them. There'll be a document drawn up that the council will approve, and certainly, their increase in rent will be looked at as well. So, it is something, the town has often, in the past several years, rented space on the tower by the firehouse to cellphone providers, and it's a revenue stream for the town. It's not huge, but certainly, it helps a little bit. And finally, I just wanted to discuss an overview regarding our financial dashboard. Robert Bute, our finance director, had given us preliminary numbers regarding closing out of fiscal year 19. Now, these numbers are going to be audited by our audit firm, so I can give you these numbers, which are subject to audit, but it was an interesting year end for the town. What happened was our revenues exceeded what was budgeted by approximately $426,000. A good portion of that amount came from delinquent tax collections. We were recently able to collect a very large portion of tax payments from a business in town. So, that was a large portion of what happened. We also saw an increase in building permits, and we also closed several projects which also attributed to an increase in our revenue. Of course, we also have to look at our expenditures because we have two sides to the ledger. Our expenditures were estimated to come in under budget by approximately $605,000. The majority of that amount came from staff turnover. We had savings in salaries, and we had some significant electricity savings last year. So, as a result, we ended up on a positive note. As I said, both revenue, the revenue came in over anticipated and over what we budgeted, and the expenditures came in under what we anticipated and budgeted. So, it's always reassuring that you close out your fiscal year in a positive manner. Yet again, I will say, these numbers are going to be audited by our audit firm, so until those are actually confirmed by our auditors, we'll say this is probably where we're going to be. There could be some minor adjustments depending on what they look at, and if they have questions on some of the other items. So, we ended up in a good place. So, that would be it for me tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
I just had one question regarding the improvement to the water, the water softening. Will there be any cost to the consumer with these upgrades? Do you know of?
That's a good question. Yes. The answer is yes, and I cannot tell you what that would be because, as I said, the water company has to go through several regulatory agencies before they can do any of these things. And just as a side note, the Plainville Water Company has not had a rate increase in nine years. So, that is pretty unusual for, you know, for a privately held company to not ask for any rate increases. However, when they do go ahead and do these major capital improvements, they can go back to the regulatory agencies and ask for changes in their rate structure, which is what everybody does. That's very common practice. So, there will probably be some increase. Some of the percentages of increase range between 5% and 7%. So, if you want to do a calculation on your water bill to see if you're like falling to one of those averages, that would be probably not a bad thing to, you know, you could base it on that. However, the end of it is, you know, they can't submit their rate increase until the project is completely done. They will go out and fund the project, then they will come back to the regulatory agency and ask for an increase to help them pay back some of these, some of the debt that they had to borrow to do it.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, onto the superintendent's report. Mr. LaPage?
Thank you, Chair Hardy. It's my pleasure tonight to share a few words about our opening of school. I'll do so from this seat because, as you know, I have quite a few notes to read from. But it was a very exciting opening to the school year, and it's my pleasure to address you and the town as the superintendent of schools, especially Ally. Thank you, Ally, for being a board liaison. Second year, you came back for more, so thank you very much as a senior this year. So, I hope you have a terrific year, and thanks for being here. So, it's my pleasure first to introduce publicly Mr. David Levenduski. I learned to say his name pretty well. Said it a few times now.
Welcome.
So, Mr. Levenduski was hired in late August as our new assistant superintendent of schools. Through our review, and thorough review, and the interview process, Mr. Levenduski shared his extensive building leadership experience as well as district leadership experience in Meriden over the last 21 years. He's been a high school assistant principal, interim high school principal, elementary principal for several years, and then he was a central office, a member of the central office team in Meriden for several years as well, with many community ties and several positions, several roles and duties in that position that are, that will lend well to this rather comprehensive position that he's taking on here as we went through his job description the other day, and he got to see the long list of things he gets to do. So, he'll be a valuable asset, and we welcome him to Plainville Schools. He's going to be a great addition to our team, which is already tremendously strong thanks to our amazing administrators and staff. We will be together, going to all the open houses throughout the district, Wednesday night to the middle school's open house, correct, Mr. Guarino? And then next Wednesday, we're going to have to, we have a pretty tight schedule. We're going to go to all four schools in one night, probably 20 minutes at each school, just saying hello to families. So, looking forward to having the community meet David and also to reconnecting with him myself. So, opening of the school year takes many thousands of hours of careful planning and preparation that starts, started last year. Administrators spend a lot of, a lot of the summer preparing schedules and thousands of small and large details involved in the start of the school year. They do this while our maintenance and custodial staff are very busy preparing our schools for the start of the year. They do a tremendous job, and I want to thank them for really getting our schools into tip-top shape and looking new. Speaking of new, Wheeler School is coming along beautifully, and they renovate its new project. They are entering, they're in Phase Three now of a three-phase renovation project that will conclude in February. Everything's going as scheduled, which is great news, maybe even a little ahead, but we'll see how things end up. As our board saw at our retreat on August 26th, we were fortunate to take a tour of the building at the start of our, at the start of our retreat, and a tremendous amount of work has been done there over the course of the summer. There's more to come, but they're looking to finish up on time. So, I wanted to thank Steve Bussel, Director Supervisor of Facilities, Scott Martin, Principal Batch Elder, and of course, ONG Superintendent Matt Alshewski. He's done a great job. I'd be remiss without mentioning Kevin Ross, Director of Technology in the back of the room there, who has been instrumental with his team across the district. Every year, they're like busy ants getting the nest ready. They're all over the place, setting up technology, monitors, audio, all the Chromebook preparations, iPads, you name it. They're a very busy team, so I want to thank Kevin Ross and his team for the great job they do. So, our first day of school, that's what this picture's really about. Thanks to Lynn Davis for following me and Mr. Levenduski around town as best she could. I was all over the place. The first day was filled with great excitement and anticipation by our students, the families and staff. The first day comes with all the newness and excitement, outfits, the backpacks. It's great to see all that excitement. It's always fun every year. I can attest to the level of preparation that our staff put into preparing a meaningful welcome back to the kids. It's really impressive. Everything from luau at Tofflon to, you know, Mr. Batch Elder and his military-like fashion of precision with his dismissals, it's just an impressive, everything they do is well thought out. So, a few things that stand out in my mind from the first day. At the high school, Principal Johnson asked all of his teachers and staff to form a receiving line for the, following the freshmen, the meeting with all the freshmen. There's a staggered entrance to school that day with all the freshmen coming in for orientation with upperclassmen and administrators and teachers. So, I thought that was a really cool way to welcome these freshmen as they came out of the auditorium to report for their various tours and things they were doing. The entire staff was lined up outside the back of the auditorium, clapping and cheering, and there was a great video that Mr. Johnson shared. So, that's kind of their first impression of the high school, and it'll be their last impression when they, when they have the receiving line after graduation. So, I really thought that was, that was great and not surprising with, under the leadership at the high school. I was able to join the senior breakfast here on Friday. Terrific. Chick-fil-A sponsored it. I didn't know they make breakfast sandwiches. They're actually quite good. We also had our food service staff provide a nice breakfast, but the message there was really meaningful as well, and I think the seniors hopefully, were you there, Ally? Pretty good, right? It was, it was a, good. It was a nice, nice welcome back for our seniors, the leaders of our school. Mr. Guarino, Mr. Guarino, our middle school principal, and his entire team take the transition and all the supports the kids very seriously. It's a, it's a challenging age, it's an exciting age, but that year coming from fifth grade, especially into sixth grade, you're coming from all the different elementary schools and joining in one, one common place, in one common school, really exciting. So, they do a tremendous job with all the welcome back ceremonies. Each of the elementary schools took tremendous steps to make the welcome back meaningful. Like I said, the luau theme at Tofflon followed by the town hall meeting, and a really funny and incredible video they always put on. Mr. Sanders and his team just welcoming the kids back and really building a strong positive culture at Linden, and at Wheeler, you know, just a welcome back for all the families outside. And then I got to take a tour of the building again with a couple of, a couple of reporters, so that was really nice, and just showing off the new building. So, I'm optimistic that as, as we start our year in convocation with a hero theme, with all the heroic actions of our district staff and the leadership team and Board of Education and town, and all working together as one community, I'm optimistic that we're going to have a tremendous year. So, and we're off to a great start. So, that's my opening of school report. And unfortunately for you, you got to hear from me again because I am up again to do the overview of the newly revised strategic plan. So, I'll walk over to the podium, and I think Kevin has it up. So, as the Board of Ed is aware, just over three years ago, we came together as a community represented by over 50 members of this community, including members of the town, members of the Board of Education, Town Council, Town Manager, Representative Pettit. At the time, Betty Bokus was with us, may she rest in peace, and just a really nice group of families, students, parents, and we came together and we talked about what was really important in Plainville. And through that conversation, we came to, we came to some conclusions about what our vision for the district is, what our beliefs about the district and about our education system is, and then about some goals. And from those goals, action steps and outcomes that we're looking for through those goals in the everyday work that we do, our focus through the budget, through our planning, through the work of our administrators and our teachers, and achieving those goals for the district. So, at this point, as with any plan, it's only useful if you're looking at it, checking in to see how you're doing toward the success of the plan, and then making steps to refine and adjust as you accomplish parts of the goal. So, as we go to the vision document that we had created at the end of that 50-some-odd panel committee taking, taking place over several sessions, this is the visual that is across the district, pretty much everywhere you look, you'll see this vision document. And it includes a focus on, first of all, the vision statement, "To inspire and prepare lifelong learners, to follow their passion, engage in their communities, and positively impact our global society." That's the big idea. And then under that, underneath "Students Teaching and Learning," those three goal statements, which I won't read, but you know them well, and then following the goals, the actions are going to, that will get us to achieve our goals, and what outcomes we're looking for as indicators that we're successful. Those are all listed on this one document. So, in looking at that, and based on a thorough analysis of our current status with our strategic plan, with our administrative team over the summer, with our central office team prior to that, and then our coherence institute with all the administrators from the town that got together for two days and did some really deep diving into our work that we're planning for the year, we did some revision. We did some updates. We looked at the spreadsheet that accompanies this, if you go to the next slide. And we won't, I won't click on this, but the spreadsheet is, it's about 20 pages of, yeah, there we go. It's got a tab for Students Teaching and Learning, and it's, it's pretty wide, and what we do is update that regularly to monitor how we're doing toward our, toward students' teaching and learning, all the goals within, and objectives within those goals. And we put a date on those, and there are primary people responsible and secondary people responsible from the district, from our leadership team, and we've done a tremendous amount of work, and things are going really well toward the achievement of these objectives and goals. But at this time, we decided to look at what we've done, look at what we need to do in the future, and modify slightly our action statements. So, if we could go back to the main slideshow. So, yeah, that's fine, Kevin, the next one. So, to simplify what you're looking at, and to give it a little bit, to make it a little easier on the eyes, I should say, a little easier to understand what we're all about in Plainville, you'll notice that the vision is still the same, the vision statement at the top, we just bolded "Inspire, Prepare, and Engage" because that's sort of our mantra across Plainville. We have the same goals for students' teaching and learning, but then our action statements have adjusted slightly, or significantly in some cases, to focus on the areas we have not yet fully accomplished and to shift with the times since the last three years have brought some change. So, for the first action underneath "Students," you'll see "Develop and meaningfully implement a district-wide vision of the graduate." I'm really proud of the work that Principal Johnson and the committee from the district are doing toward development of a vision of the graduate. They'll be rolled out throughout all of our schools as we, as we really build those skills that are so important to students' success once they leave high school. Those cross-cutting skills that can be measured at any age throughout their time in Plainville schools, knowing where we want them to be at the end. Support the physical, social, and emotional needs and growth of all Plainville Community Schools' students and staff. So, we're putting a large emphasis on this, as the Board knows, with our work with Ruler and Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Our work with the Castle Standards led by Vicky Trudinsky and her SEL Committee. We'll continue that work this year. So, really focusing on our work with school safety and security, so the physical safety piece, really working on safety and security in all forms. Expanding STEM, STEAM, and makerspace opportunities across the district. So, as you know, through the Florence-Fitzgibbon Grant, we were able to build a beautiful STEAM lab at the middle school a couple of years ago, and it's been really well-used and robustly used over there by their team. We'll also look to expand makerspace and additional options for kids at all levels related to STEM and STEAM. So, that's part of our plan. Underneath "Teaching," you'll notice focused instructional rounds that we do. We do many instructional rounds as an administrative team, as school teams, as a district leadership, central office team. We're out on rounds almost every week, and we're really going to look at school improvement plans and how we're really focused on the success of our students and the implementation of our school learning plans, school improvement plans, that really focus on achieving our vision. We're going to ensure equity and access to the curriculum for all learners with our growing English learners population. A lot of work has been done by Ms. Perez in hiring the right people for those supports that are, that are not only required but essential and needed for the students who are learning a second language while speaking their own as well, really embracing that and providing access to all students that we have in Plainville. Using professional learning communities to meaningfully, really shift instruction. So, that's the key. If you look at how students are doing and admire what If you look at how students are doing and admire what might be conceived as a problem, but don't do anything about it, and I'm not saying that's the case, you won't get the results you want. So, we're gonna do that even more so, where we're really focusing on what instructional shifts can we make to improve student learning. And our teams are doing great, our PLCs are, some of them are absolutely amazing, and everybody's moving in the right direction toward being really effective and efficient. Implementing learning targets that align to the instructional core, learning targets, again, under our curriculum instruction assessment, you know, the work with Ms. Perez, Ms. Graham Douglas, and our principals and our staff, all of our, all our teachers have really embraced learning targets as, "What are we trying to accomplish here, why are we trying to accomplish it, and how are we gonna know that we achieve what we, what we set out to achieve?" In meaningful terms that students know. And finally, under learning, align standards-based curriculum instruction and assessment so that there's alignment and clarity vertically and horizontally as to what we're doing and why we're doing it. Audit assessments to make sure that the assessments we're giving are valuable and result in the, the success for our kids that we want them to. And if they're not essential and are not meaningful, then we shouldn't use them. Improve interventions and supports, especially do tier-one interventions really well in the classrooms, but also expand our tier-two interventions. It was something that was noted in the NIASC report that we're gonna continue to work on at the high school, but also across the district as we, as we learn to support all kids better towards success. Maximize our use of instructional technology for engaging teaching and learning. So, we do a really good job with this, and we're gonna continue to get even better through training. Kevin Ross and his team, and through the Board of Ed's tremendous support, along with the town's support, have really set us up with amazing technology, and we're using it in very meaningful and important ways that will prepare students for success. We're gonna do that even more so by continuing to provide the training and support they need. So, just based on all of that, we have two theories of action that are part of the work we're gonna do this year that will really focus the school improvement plans toward this work and all the teacher goals toward, toward achievement of these theories of action as well. So, I will read them because the words were very intentionally chosen by our administrative team. "If we use high-level PLCs," there are seven levels, we're looking for level five to seven, "and other collaborative structures to analyze both student performance and instructional practices and shift instruction to meet the needs of all students, then student achievement will increase." So, it's a big wordy statement, but it means exactly what we want it to. We're gonna dig down, we're gonna change what we do to help kids learn better. And then theory of action two, "If we implement learning targets that align standards-based curriculum instruction and assessment, then student engagement and achievement will increase." And those are really important to go together, engagement and achievement. So, that's our update. I'm, I'm going to be producing, mass-producing the, the last three-ring document with a light blue. See, the first one had like a cloudy sky, and it was kind of dreary looking, now the blue sky came out, and we see the, the vision more clearly there. So, that's the goal. Do we have any questions at all about either the opening of school or the update on the strategic plan and vision?
We think you and your team will do a fine job.
We will do our very best, thank you. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce the one and only Vicky Trzynski. I did that in rehearsal today, I don't think she thought I'd really say it tonight. So, Vicky Trzynski is our Director of Special Services, and she is the one and only one that we have, but she's very unique and... I have to, I have to get myself out of this one now. Vicky has a tremendous reputation in the state, you know, no matter where I go, whatever district I go to, oh, you have Vicky. You know, she's well-known, she, she works really, really hard for kids. She's kind of that behind-the-scenes support a lot of the time, or at the meetings, helping, helping students in, you know, PPTs or helping teachers to help kids. So, Vicky works really hard, and she has some good news to share. So, I wanna, I'm gonna introduce Vicky Trzynski to share the district annual performance reports and determinations, and also just a quick special ed update. So, thank you, Vicky, and thank you, Board.
Hi, good evening, nice to speak with you this evening. I'd like to update you about the work of our Specials Education Department. I do want to notice that we are sort of shifting from special education to special services. While special education is a humongous part of what we do out of my office, we also provide services through our preschool program. I'm responsible for all the nursing services, all mental health services. So, it is bigger than special education, although tonight we'll be focused primarily on our special education. This graph represents the prevalence rate of special education students in Plainville. The state uses the October 1st head count as our official notice. So, right now, we have 13.3% of all of our students here in Plainville, ages three through 21, who are identified as in need of special education. The state average is now 15%. That is the highest average that has, really the state has ever seen for special education services. That, for us, represents about 309 students who are requiring special education services throughout their ages, the, the age band of three to 21. If you take a look at our prevalence rate by disability, this represents the primary categories of disabilities for students that we have in Plainville. You'll notice that the learning disability category is significantly higher for the state average. And we're really proud of this sort of statistic because I think this represents what, what Plainville does for children and our fantastic scientific research-based intervention model. We keep a lot of kids from being identified as having learning disabilities because we do a really great job of differentiating instruction for all of our students. So, as a result, you'll see that the, because the Plainville's a little lower in that area, it's a little higher in some of the others. I do also want you to note that the autism prevalence rate continues to grow. Just reading a, a statistic from the State Department of Education, that autism has increased 100% from 2008. So, we've doubled the number of students with autism spectrum disorders identified for special education. So, there may be even more than that who, who have that disability, but it may not have impact in, in the classroom. That's a pretty, that's a pretty big change, and because of that, we have, with your help in the last budget session, we invested in some staff with an additional expertise and training in that area to help us. So, the annual performance report that you have in your packet represents, I believe that there are 14 general indicators of the district's special education compliance. We are very happy to announce that we have met the requirements. This is no easy task. If you look at the report itself, most of the indicators require 100% compliance. So, even one or two students would make us not in compliance. And so, we have demonstrated compliance in the areas of ensuring that all students are properly identified for special education, that students with minority racial and ethnic groups are not over, being over-identified as having disabilities. We also have ensured that students with disabilities are not disciplined more frequently than their non-disabled peers, that all requirements are met for transitions from age three into our preschool program, and that all identified students have formal transition plans for life after high school by age 15. One of the important data points for our annual performance report is the percentage of time that students with disabilities spend with their non-disabled peers. The goal is for all children to spend at least 80% of their time with their non-disabled peers. And we've seen a slight decrease in this overall percentage, but if I want to show you the next slide, that might give us some possible explanations. One of the other things we're pretty proud about is that the identification, the percentage of students who are being placed out of district continues to decline. So, these students who, if they were placed in an out-of-district school, would be with 100% of the time with other kids with disabilities. By bringing them back into district, they may not fully be able to participate at the 80%, which is our goal, but at least they are having more opportunities to spend with their peers and to participate in our community and to be part of all of the community activities. As a result of this report, we are looking really for four special education priorities, and we'll talk briefly about each of them. The first one, as I described already, is that we really want to maintain students within our school community. The, as a result of the hard work from Leanne Gomindl, our supervisor from special education, and our special education instructional leaders, Christina Kiley and Carissa Zipkowski, we have reduced the number of students placed in separate schools by almost 50%. You can see in June there of 2016, we had 39 students placed in other schools. Starting this school year, we are at 19, so pretty proud of that. Through the strategic use and hiring of staff and support staff, we have been able to maintain more students within the district and support them within our community, and we're really glad that they're here with our, with their families to be able to fully engage in our educational process in Plainville. Aligned with this is our priority for programming for students with more significant disabilities who are ages 18 to 21. This is required by law to ensure that students are able to be as independent as possible and part of the larger community. Our vocational coordinator has helped us to partner with a number of local businesses, including Nazo's, Goodwill, Town Hall, Walgreens, CrossFit Gym, Saks Pizza, Family Barber Shop, and Datto. We currently have four full-time students participating in what is now officially called the Plainville Transition Program. We have several other students who are still considered students of Plainville High School who are also beginning their experiences in this area. The students rotate between a number of these experiences based on their interests and preferences. Prior to our development of this program last year, we would have had to contract with other agencies, or we would have used outplacement schools in order to provide these experiences. Another major priority continues to be to reduce the gap between students with disabilities and their peers' academic performance. This slide represents the growth rate of students with disabilities compared to their typical peers in the 2019 Smarter Balanced Assessments. As you can see, the growth rate for students with disabilities is closer to our non-disabled peers in the area of language arts. This is where we've targeted many of our efforts to increase reading and writing achievement. While the full district report is still pending, we know that Linden Street School was named as a school of distinction for closing the achievement gap in language arts for the high-risk population, which includes our special education students. We expect that our professional learning community process will help us to result, help to find similar results across the district, and that we'll continue to see that, that gap decrease. And finally, I'd like to talk about the early childhood or inclusive preschool program. This is an important priority for us, started by Dr. Brummett when she was here. Early childhood services are required by law through IDEA, and so we have to provide those services for any student with a disability starting at age three. Over the past three years, however, we've been able to meet the needs of those students while also meeting the needs of 100 to 140 students, depending on the year. And many of them, we've been able to meet their needs without identifying them as special education students. For those children who do have the documented disabilities, we're able, they are able to participate in a high-quality, full-day preschool program with their non-disabled peers starting at age three, which gives us the opportunity to, again, close that achievement gap sooner and hopefully prepare them for kindergarten and beyond with more opportunity. I'm gonna be sharing more about our preschool program, I believe, in November, and so we'll, we'll talk more about that. But those are our priorities. Does anybody have any questions?
Just, just this, Vicky, you had noticed there, the increase in the autism di... You think it's, this is unfair for me to ask you, probably. Do you think it's really, is it diagnosis that we think has gotten better, or do we think it's really an increase in, in the amount of students who actually have?
I think it's a combination of all. I think that the diagnostic criteria did change about four years ago, five years ago. The Diagnostic and Statistical Manual did change the criteria. So, the, some of the labels, things like Asperger's or Ray's Syndrome that might have been sort of in that spectrum have sort of been now to autism spectrum level one, two, and three. So, I think that changed some of it. I also think there's a whole lot more awareness and a whole lot more understanding of it. And in truth, I think some of this is that the medical community has also embraced a bit of autism. Some of the medical services that families have needed for so long are now being covered by some insurance companies, and that, that makes, you know, that medical availability greater. I think it's a combination of all.
Thanks, Vicky.
I have always been curious myself about autism, two nephews who are autistic. Do you think this is something that's always existed, just never identified? I mean, it's not necessarily an increase, is we always had that population, just never identified, diagnosed?
Probably. I, I think it, you know, we know that it's a neurobiological disorder, and we know that there are many different causes for it. And I think, you know, there's sort of a saying that if you've seen, if you've met one person with autism spectrum disorder, you've met one person. The spectrum is so wide, and it is so varied. I think that our society has increased the demands for social communication, for problem-solving, for perspective-taking, and so I think that just makes it, you know, more challenging for people who are sort of somewhere on that autism spectrum. I think life's a little harder in this technological world, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, Vicky. As I said, Vicky does a tremendous job with her entire team, so we really appreciate all that she does. So, the last item on my report is just the board presentation list for 2019-20 for this year. It is included in your packet. I don't know if you probably don't need me to go to, go through in any detail, but if you have any questions, it's supplied in your board packet. So, we have presentations for you each month that you can look forward to. And then not by me, most of the time. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lepage.
You're quite welcome.
Going on to board subcommittee reports, Ally?
The first day of school was Tuesday, the 3rd, and the freshmen, as Mr. Lepage said, came in early, and the seniors gave them a tour of the school, and it was just kind of a nice way to get them acclimated to high school. And each class that day, like each grade, had a meeting in the auditorium about the expectations for the year, any new policies. And then the senior class had their class breakfast on Friday, which was really nice, that Chick-fil-A sponsored. And again, it was just policy, fundraising, the new rule about cell phones to prevent them from being a distraction. And then for sports, a lot of the sports have started. Like cross-country had their first meet on Friday at the Blue Dragon Invitational. Football, girls' soccer have also started, but boys' soccer and volleyball won't start till Saturday, but so far, everyone's looking good for their seasons. And the class elections are coming up in a week or two, depending on what grade you're in. And then Art Rich took senior pictures today. Underclassmen will take theirs on the 16th or 17th, and the open house will be on the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Terrell?
Do you want me to say it again, or?
I'm not the only one.
Who's waving? Hi, Kevin, oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
So, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Mrs. Peterson for finance report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. No advocacy update. Turf Committee, Mr. Lepage?
Turf Committee is not at, Mrs. Peterson.
Mr. White?
The PAC will be meeting on this Wednesday, the 11th. That'll be their first meeting of the year.
Okay, Mrs. Consalvo, Tofflon?
Tofflon had a great back-to-school luau for the children, and they had a great first day. Right now, they sent home the Cherrydale fundraising forms, that's, that's been handing out this week with each class. And then they're reserving Saturday, September 21st, for Carabin Farms Apple Picking Day for families. And that's about it for right now.
Thank you. And next, we have Mrs. Wills.
Okay, the Linden PTO has a new president, Sean Sullivan, who is here in our audience, and a new secretary, Christina Glasper. Sarah Wartonic returns as vice president, and Nancy Autuno remains as treasurer. They held their fourth annual back-to-school picnic on August 29th, and it was a great event. The Fall Book Fair will be held on September 16th during open house. The first fundraiser of the year, Cherrydale Farms and Otis Spunkenmeyer will begin at the end of this month, and there- the end of this month, and their next PTO meeting is this Wednesday, September eleventh.
Thank you. Mrs. St. Lawrence, Middle School?
So the Middle School MSP PTC has some new officers. We have Jennifer Martin as the president, Kurt Stevens as the vice president, Christine Bravado as the secretary, and Samantha Miller as our treasurer. They will be meeting, I believe, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, and we already mentioned, but they have their open house on Wednesday, September eleventh, I think at six-thirty.
That's it. Ms. Paul Mary Wheeler on elementary?
Wheeler does not have their first meeting for another two weeks.
Thank you. Mrs. Terrell, Council Report?
The Council will meet for its first time this year on Wednesday, the eighteenth.
Thank you. And my report, Assistant Superintendent David Levandowski. Levandowski, welcome. It was a great interview with you. I think we were all happy that we did the right thing. Pairing you up with Mr. Lepage might be a little iffy, though. I'm not sure from what I heard, but congratulations and welcome. The summer had been pretty busy with us for negotiations. We had three different sets of negotiations, still working on two, but I'm sure we'll get through that with no problem. We have conducted tonight a self-evaluation and a goal-setting plan for ourselves, and we have met with Mr. Lepage in executive session to discuss these goals and objectives, so that will be forthcoming. Other than that, summer was pretty quiet. No unfinished business, no new business, board open forum, board members. Does anybody have anything to say?
I would. I'd like to thank all the volunteers that helped out at Balloon Fest. I know a lot of us on the Board of Education helped and a lot of students, and thank you so much. That was a great event. It was very successful, and it wouldn't have been successful without our volunteers, and even Mr. Lepage made a, an appearance at six o'clock in the morning, so thank you. Five forty, I'm sorry. It was five forty. It was a good time. We all had fun. And congrats to our new superintendent and assistant superintendent. We're very, we're very happy to have you on board. We know you guys will do Plainville proud. And Pumpkin Fest that is coming up in October, we will also need volunteers for that, so Steve, you can put that on your calendar, too. It's not that early in the morning.
Thank you. Mr. Addles?
Yeah, one point out, like, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Really, I think Crystal probably will not blow her tutored horn a little bit, but the band parents did a fantastic fundraiser. Over, over twelve hundred mums were sold, and it really raises a lot of money for the bands, which is quite good, and I just think that the effort they did last week and getting all of the plants in and then out to everybody before it rained last weekend was, was just excellent, but it's a, a really good example of how people working together can really get things done for the schools.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep. You can't get past me. Crystal, I owe you money, and it's in my car. I was just like, when you said that, I was like, oh, good, the money, and then I left it in the car.
Text in the mail, huh?
No, really. I said, I gotta remember to do this, because, you know, I'm just terrible, and she'll never ask me, and, you know. So, yeah. Yeah, I do, I just have to say that, you know, the Wheeler tour that we had at the beginning of the year was really awesome, and I, you know, am impressed with the amount of work that was done, the thoughtfulness that's going into the project. I, I can't imagine what it must feel like as the kids and the parents there right now, even though it's not complete, you can really see, you know, what's happening and, and how awesome that, that is, and how great that's going to feel for them when it's completed. And, you know, the principal's been doing an awesome job and everybody there, so really appreciate that. Welcome, Mr. Levandowski, Levanduski? Levanduski there, I got it. So we, we're glad that you are here and, and look forward to having you tick a lot of things off of Steve's list, because he's very focused on his lists. And with that, I just, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Lepage as, as our new superintendent. Normally, we would have maybe a party or celebration of some kind, but we're not doing that, and Steve's probably really happy about that, because if you haven't noticed, he's kind of like a self-deprecating, very kind of thoughtful, cautious person at times. However, however, that, those kinds of attributes for a superintendent can be a little scary if you are not also courageous. So we are very fortunate, because he's very courageous as well. So I really am looking forward to his, his tenure, and, and it's funny, sitting here thinking about, somebody mentioned, you know, something that Dr. Dr. Brummett did. I, I think Vicky in her, in her presentation, and I'm thinking about the levels of previous superintendents and the things they have brought and the things they have built, and just, it really is, it's just an extension of the next step, and it's, and it's all good. So I feel very fortunate to live in a community that values education in that way and to be able to serve on the board and contribute in some small way. Now I'm done.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
Yes. I just wanted to welcome everyone back as well, and again, congratulations, David. And I also wanted to say that the meeting that we had at Wheeler was, it was very, very nice to see. The school's absolutely beautiful, and, and when it's completed, you know, everyone, I, I brag about it and where I go, so I brag about it to everybody, especially the, the outside little golf course that we could have for the children, but no, I'm just kidding. So anyways, I just wanted to say that, you know, that was very, very nice to see, and what else was I going to say? I think that's about it, but welcome back to everyone as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're done? Okay, moving on. Sam, no report from you?
Right, we'll have, we'll have our first report next, next meeting we do mid-month or every quarter.
Okay. Thank you. And then I will need a motion to request approval for changes to the twenty nineteen, twenty district's school calendar. Steve, Mr. Lepage?
Can I just give a little detail on that?
Sure.
Is that all right? Just so that, the March twentieth Professional Development Day that was scheduled at the end of, during last year, it came to our attention that the presidential primary will be held on April twenty-eighth, which is also slated as the date for the townwide referendum vote. So in order to have all of that going on in our schools, because we have to use our elementary schools as voting, voting places, like we will tomorrow, but a much smaller, you know, a much smaller scale, we just felt for the sake of school security and disruption and parking and all the things that a presidential primary, as well as the referendum vote, and would bring, it would make, it made much more sense to, to switch the two, so that March twentieth will be a full day, regular day of school, and April twenty-eighth would be the professional learning day for all of the staff, no school for students on April twenty-eighth, and that will alleviate those, those problems. So that was my proposal of the calendar.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lepage, revised wellness?
So, so in order to enact the strategic plan that I presented earlier tonight, it would just require a vote, because it, it is the charter course of what we're going to focus on for the next couple of years until, I meant to say earlier that at the start of next year, we'll reform a large stakeholder committee like we did three years ago and start the plan for, for the following school year, which will be, believe it or not, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. But what I propose tonight would, would carries forward, along with the modified spreadsheet that you didn't necessarily see in full detail, but all the actions it will take to accomplish the rest of those goals that are adjusted. So that, that was my proposal of the updated strategic plan. For your consideration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I was on an older sheet of paper that I had here. Okay, my next one, let me see if I can get this. Okay. Consent, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.